And start recording. Thank you all so much for joining us today. This is the Health Related Social Needs Partner Work Session. And we are here today to talk about Oregon's 1115 Medicaid waiver. And really talk through, we have actually a pretty straightforward agenda today. We have two major things that we want to share today. Which is that we shared a little bit of introductory information a few months ago about community capacity building funding. And what that means for our community based organizations, social service and health partners. Folks who are likely to be providing people with these health related social needs services. And are looking for a way to do that through our 1115 Medicaid waiver. So we're going to give some background on, on what you may hear us call CCBF. Cause we like our acronyms, or try our hardest to stay away from them. And then also to talk about more details into what that community capacity building funding grant application. What the, the budget request template, some, some templates that we're making to try to standardize some of the aspects of this opportunity. And you'll be hearing from someone who knows a lot more than I do about this. I realized I once again jumped right in. I didn't say hello. My name is Jessica Diaz. I use she/her pronouns and I'm a community engagement manager here at the Oregon Health Authority. So I kind of sideways snuck in my own introduction as a means of then directing you to another excellent person who's going to be talking through the next few slides. Suzanne, Suzanne, can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Hi, I'm Suzanne Cross. I use she/her A pronouns. And I work for OHA as a health policy analyst and I'm one of the many team members working on the community capacity building funds. We will try not to use acronyms and we'll try to explain them when we do. We're gonna, you know, as Jessica said, go over just a brief overview of the health related social needs services. And then go into the community capacity building funds. I'll give a brief reminder of what the health related social needs are and thank you. As part of the new Medicaid waiver. And then I definitely like to invite people to ask questions as they come up. As Jessica mentioned, please feel free to use the chat or raise your hand. And we will do our best to answer your questions verbally or in the chat. And whatever we can't answer today, well, we'll commit to tracking and providing responses at a later time. We also, as Jessica mentioned, have a bunch of time at the end that I expect we'll be able to answer hopefully as many of your questions as we're able. And also my colleague and subject matter expert, I think I saw Lisa Kreis on here, is here to help me today respond to your questions. So the health related social needs are the social and economic needs that impact someone's ability to maintain their health and wellbeing. So this can be examples of affordable housing and utilities, reliable transportation, access to healthy and affordable foods. And within the 1115 waiver, there are different areas that will help address health related social needs. Certain services and benefits covered will be related to either housing, nutrition, climate related, or outreach and engagement. Next slide, please, Sully. And so in order to ensure that HRSN, Health Related Social Needs Services are available. There are two major, two different funding components that we want to be clear, I want to be clear to differentiate for you today. First, and primarily what we're talking about today is the $119 million available as grant money to support infrastructure development and capacity building for HRSN providers or future HRSN providers. The purpose is to support processes needed to provide the HRSN services, such as enough staff, staff training technology, et cetera. And this is the focus of our session today. But in addition, there will also be $904 million available to be used for the HRSN service benefit to eligible individuals. And we'll talk about who those are focusing on housing, nutrition, climate, or outreach and engagement supports and services. Next slide, please. Okay, so as I mentioned, Oregon has been authorized to spend up to $119 million for this funding used to support the development and implementation of the HRSN Health Related Social Needs Program. This amount includes also the amount that will be set aside for tribal governments and tribal providers. And that will be administered through a different process. The remainder of the funds will be distributed through the coordinated care organizations, the CCOs, for eligible community partners. We'll be talking a bit more on who will be considered an eligible community partner in a couple of slides here. CCOs, as Jessica mentioned, will be required to use a standardized application and budget request template, which we're going to share with you, the components of that today. And would be looking forward to your input and questions about it. And eligible community partners such as community based organizations and others will be able to apply for and use these funds. They'll apply to their CCO and use the funds to support the Health Related Social Needs Program. Next slide, please. I'll share some of the overall goals that we're holding ourselves accountable to as we develop the policy and processes for these funds. Number one, we want to prioritize the funds for potential or current HRSN providers or future HRSN providers. Two, it's important we reserve the funds for tribal governments. As I mentioned, there'll be a set aside amount. Three, we want to engage community partners to help design the funding program, which is why we're here today. To hear from you all and engage you all about the design of the funding program. Four, we want to promote access to the funds across amongst HRSN providers that are not necessarily currently Medicaid billing providers. So Medicaid billing providers are eligible to apply for the funds, but we also want to expand our outreach across the state. And in the areas of housing and climate and food, there will definitely be new providers that can become HRSN providers. And the hope, the intent of these funds is to support that process. Five is to support the oversight of the program to deliver the funds. We also in six, want to ensure that the funds are spread geographically across the state. Then, as you'll see, when it's real important to gather your input on this process today, we want to design a real simple and user friendly application, that's our intention and budget, to be able to apply for the funds. And we want to promote access to the funds for providers who serve the HRSN covered populations and the priority populations. And again, in another few slides, we'll specifically call out who those populations are. And this slide describes the eligible groups who can apply for these funds. So I'll read through the groups and then I'd love to hear if there's any questions about this. Community based organizations, social service agencies, housing agencies and housing providers, food and nutrition service providers, case management providers, traditional health workers, child welfare providers and county and city and local government agencies. And I want to, I want to just make it clear that individuals can't apply for these funds, but what's meant on this slide is to mean that organizations that employ case managers or traditional health workers such as community health workers or peer support specialists and others are eligible to apply. And then as noted on the bottom, the final list of eligible providers will be confirmed by CMS, which is the Center for Medicaid and Medicare, Medicare and Medicaid Services. So are there any questions about who's eligible before we move on to the next slide? Okay, again, I welcome you all. As questions arise, please feel free to ask them in the chat or raise hands if needed. Okay, thanks. Sully, next slide, please. So the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS, has outlined specific allowable uses for the community capacity building funding as part of this state's waiver agreement. And they're broken down into four categories. First one is technology. So they have an example on the slide of new billing systems. Other examples might include modifying existing technology systems to support HRSN services or screening technology to find people who are eligible. Integrating existing data platforms or tools that are already in existence might be another example. The second area is development of business or operational practices. So example is designing workflows to provide the HRSN services. Another example might be including development of the business practices that you need to have, an organization might need to have to do billing or data sharing or program evaluation. The third area is workforce development. So example, support for recruiting new staff that might be needed to provide HRSN services. Another example might be staff needing to implement the HRSN services. The limitation of time for staff payment is 18 months. Another example is necessary certifications or trainings for staff in the HRSN program. And then the fourth category is outreach, education and convening. So for example, launching a new learning collaborative. Another example might be planning or facilitating community based outreach events to support the awareness of HRSN services. And I think it's a good slide to pause and ask for questions because I think I saw some come up in the chat.
Yes, and maybe I can read them to you and that could be, that could be a way that we can start to get some of these answered or flagged for answers in the future. So the first question is, what about other Medicaid billing providers?
Yeah, and it looked like Lisa responded to that in the chat. I'll read her response here. They're, they're not excluded if they're already providing Medicaid services, but would also provide HRSN services. Does that answer the question?
So now I just wanted to clarify, because all, you know, if we want to apply for these funds, if you are an existing Medicaid billing providers, for example, a behavioral health provider, and are you automatically eligible to become an HRSN provider? Or what are, what are the requirements that you have to do? And if these requirements require some adjustment in, in capacity of staff, are you then eligible to apply for these community capacity building funds?
Thank you for the question. You absolutely are eligible to apply for the funds. In terms of the process for being a HRSN service provider, I think I'll turn to Lisa or Jessica on whether we'll be addressing that in a different presentation on how to become an HRSN specific eligible provider.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that question. Thank you. Sorry, Jessica, I didn't mean to interrupt. Okay, I'll go ahead and respond. We can certainly provide that detail. It's still being developed. I did want to respond to the direct question about whether or not you would be, you would be ineligible for these funds if you are a Medicaid provider. You could be eligible for these funds. It's not an exclusion. You would need to provide HRSN services. So that is the piece. The other piece I think that's really important is these funds cannot be duplicate funds. They cannot cover things that are covered by other sources of funding. Particularly, you know, other sources of Medicaid funding that may be available for this. So just want to make sure that that's clear. Is there another part of that question?
No, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Suzanne, you are muted.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Okay, so the next question. The question is, does an agency have to provide direct services in these areas? Or can it be an agency that supports those direct service agencies? I think that's a great question. So no, the agency does not have to necessarily be a provider of support services there, but they do have to provide a service within the HRSN services. So in other words, like in agency that would support the billing process or the training process or the outreach and education component could potentially provide, but, but in terms of services, it, I guess if your question is, does it have to be a housing or a nutrition or a climate agency? No, but they do have to be one of the eligible providers. So they do have to have traditional health workers connecting people to the services. If that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
I think I'm going to provide a little clarity around this because I want to be really careful in kind of how we think about these funds. They are really to build up the system that is going to provide the services. So one of the services is outreach and education. And so that is the service that can qualify for these funds. So I hope that's helpful, but it, it really does need to be a direct service provider. Outreach and engagement could be one of those.
Thank you, Lisa. Estella, I see your hand.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, so, so for example, on, on one of my teams, we have a team of assistants who are already doing OHP. They're helping out with OHP. But they would have to be, what was it that you said? They had to be a traditional health worker? For us to apply to receive the funds? Is that what I understood?
I think Suzanne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think she was trying to provide a, like a, a real world example. They do not need to be a traditional health worker. They just need to be. So again, you could have an organization that is connecting people already to OHP. What they would need to do to qualify for these funds is be out, doing outreach and engagement related to HRSN services. So that's a new component that they were at.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they didn't necessarily have to be a community health worker.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's really helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Estella. And then what I again reiterate Lisa's point that if, if they're being paid to do, they're connecting to Medicaid services through other funding, you can't use these capacity building funds to pay for the same thing.
What do you mean? So, yeah, maybe I'm not, I don't understand what you're saying.
So you could use these funds to connect people to HRSN services specifically, but not to pay them for other work that they're already doing that's covered through other funds.
Right, so my team specifically, we're doing, we're, we're not even, we don't have a grantor or we're not getting paid to do any of the OHP. They're just assisters. So, okay, thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, thanks. Just to sort of put a finer point out of my question. The, what I'm, what I'm looking at really particularly is that fourth category that's on the screen there, outreach, education, convening. Is the, is it possible for an agency that does not provide direct services to apply for funding and support a new learning collaborative that is made up of agencies that do in fact provide those direct services? And could that agency that's doing the convening and leading all of that apply for these funds?
I don't think so. It's a great question. And I'm, I will say that I'm going to be mulling it over and really looking at the CMS guidelines within our waiver STCs, because I do think it's a great question, but I do not think it would qualify.
That's a really great question. And I, we have, we do have a frequently asked questions document coming out. And so that might be a way that we can kind of like hone in on some of these real specific questions, but it's a really good one. Thanks, Paul.
And I also want to add another piece of detail. I'm putting this, I'm responding to questions in the chat and I'm putting this in the chat. But I want to also just lift up that we are still waiting final approval for what is called the Infrastructure Protocol. Infrastructure is the term that CMS uses for these funds. And so we still have, we are still awaiting their final approval. And so what we are sharing with you is draft as we proposed it to CMS. And we will certainly come back with any updates if we end up not receiving approval for everything that we have asked for.
That's a really good point. Everything that we have been sharing in these, in these waiver work sessions is what we are working on. And therefore there are things that are subject to change. It's a really good reminder, Lisa. I do see we have a few more questions specifically for workforce development. Does that include direct service workers like front desk staff and our staff wages eligible? And maybe if someone wants to say out loud what Lisa has said in the chat.
Yeah, I put directly from the protocol that we're asking for approval from CMS what would be covered. And so it is limited to 18 months. We know that CMS will require a limit. And so we tried to push that as much as possible to support the, the staff that we know is going to be needed. Sorry, just looking to make sure I answered all of that question. They would need to be working on HRSN related responsibilities within the clinic or organization, sorry.
I see a question about working with CCOs, but I think that might be where we're going in the next few slides as we talk a little bit more about the application process. Do you want me to ask that one now or should we hold it?
Um, you can, we can ask it now. The question is, can one agency work with more than one CCO? And the answer is yes. They cannot apply to different CCOs for the exact same thing. But if, for example, they're providing services to one CCO region and those same services to another CCO region, they can apply to both CCOs for funding for the unique regions.
Thank you. And then I see, let's see, thinking about the longer term is the idea that these capacity building funds will help build up the systems to provide HRSN services. And then the larger service funding pot will come into play for the longer term service delivery support. And I see a thumbs up and I just want to say that out loud too. Yeah, that's exactly it. Is that there's the getting started funds and then there's the actual provision of services and reimbursement or invoicing. Or I'm not going to pretend to know exactly what that looks like. Did I have that right?
Can I add just a little bit of clarity to make sure that? Yeah, great. So these funds are building up the delivery system and they really have allowable uses. And they are only within this five year demonstration period. They are not available after that. We do not have more money beyond this. We have an allowable pot for this particular use. And like I said, we're in the process of defining what some of those uses are with CMS in, within the four allowable categories. And then the 904 is really the service provision. So that is paying for the Medicaid benefit. And again, that pot of money is not beyond this demonstration. And so what, what the hope is, is that we gain experience through the provision of these services to understand an appropriate rate. And that is part of the process of learning through this demonstration. And so that rate would go into the development of a, a rate structure that would be a part of the CCO's global budget and a part of our Medicaid program for OpenCard as well. So I hope that's helpful.
And I took the liberty of navigating back to the slide where we called it out, just so that you can see and hear at the same time about that.
Thanks, Jessica.
And then question about timeframes, which is I think our very next slide.
Yeah.
I just wanted to check. It's a question I'm not sure I fully understand. Do the HRSN services have to come at a cost to the participant to be covered? And what if they're already free? I think that might be asking if there are other funding pots that are already, this might go into the duplicating or supplanting existing services question?
Yeah, can I respond to that question? So for instance, we would not want to supplant or replace maybe SNAP benefits or WIC benefits. And that is part of this process in the determination of eligibility. So this, these would all be supportive and filling in gaps and cannot replace other programs. I'm not sure about the cost to the participant. It is a Medicaid benefit.
Generally speaking, if someone, something's covered by Medicaid, it is covered. At least here in Oregon. I don't know about other states. I think we might be caught up on the questions. Should I move us ahead to timeline?
Yes, please.
All right.
Okay, so here's what the proposed timeline looks like. So firstly, CCOs will be required to do outreach to providers who will be eligible to apply for the funds between January and February of, and this is 2024. OHA is obviously also getting the word out about the funds, the part of today's webinar and other webinars. And as I mentioned, we have intention on having a website where we'll have frequently asked questions posted and links to relevant documents and places where you can go with questions on the application process and on the uses of the funds themselves. And then secondly, applications and budgets will be available to complete throughout the month of March and April. And then CCOs will have time to have a review committee to review the applications and submit their intention to fund to OHA and provide notification to those awarded, who are going to be awarded the funds. And then CCOs or the funds will be then sent out to awarded organizations around April, I mean August, sorry, for providers to begin using the funds in September. And this wouldn't be the, the only, this will be the first round of community capacity building funds, not the only round. We anticipate there'll be additional funding windows in 2025 and 2026. Although as Lisa mentioned, our demonstration period only goes through 2027. And so 2026, the amount of money will be a lot smaller. And the funding will need to be spent by 2027. The first round of funds that will be coming out this in 2024 will be allowed to be spent over a three year period of the demonstration, what's left of the demonstration period. I think that's all I want to say about that slide. Is, are there any questions or feedback on this timeline?
I want to start by asking for the, the person who asked about timeline. If this helps, answers your questions, if this brings up any more for you, maybe that's one place to start. Okay, I think we answered.
I want to give gratitude to this group because it was really this group that said that we needed it, you know, at least a 60 day window to be able to fill out, to, to get the application and template and then complete it and, and send it in. So we are holding ourselves accountable to that request. So thank you to this group for, for letting us know.
And then the next question is, how will the evaluation criteria for grant funding be developed and by who?
Oh, I'll let Lisa answer that question.
Yeah, do we have a slide that shows our application components?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm sorry, it's actually not the application component. It's the statement of work for the CCO grant program that I'm actually thinking about. Okay. So within the requirements of the grant program for these funds, we are kind of listing out the criteria by which they would select organizations. And so it And so it doesn't exclude them from contracting with organizations that they already have relationships with. But we are encouraging them and creating some requirements to go beyond the existing relationships that they have. We are asking them to really prioritize organizations that maybe serve smaller populations. So we want to, we want them to further develop their networks. So we have some prioritized populations included in there. We are also requiring that they make the selection of their awards in a collaborative process. And we can share some of these details if that's helpful too. I'd like to develop kind of a, as a part of our fact FAQs that I think Suzanne mentioned. But I'd like to develop real clarity and transparency around the criteria and we can share that.
And then another question that is along similar lines is how are CCOs identifying eligible providers?
Um, I, sorry Suzanne, were you going to answer that one? Um, there are several suggestions. We do have a two-month CCO outreach to providers in January and February is the required period of time by which they need to be doing this. There is, I, I should pull up, there's a, a whole range of kind of suggested approaches that we've put out to those CCOs within that scope of work. Really welcome feedback from you all if there are ideas, suggestions for those connections that we can share with CCOs. That would be really helpful.
And then I see a new question popped up around if a CBO, if a community-based organization is currently working with a CCO to provide services that will fall under HRSN, does that change their prioritization in any way?
It does not. We know that they're going to need to rely on those relationships and those are going to be really important. But we want to make sure that these funds are used to bring in organizations that may not have historical relationships working with Medicaid. We know that there's quite a lot of development that needs to happen for them to engage with the Medicaid system. And so we really want to make sure that these funds are used to support those organizations. And it's not just kind of the larger, more established organizations that are included. We also know there's some organizations that really work well with maybe a small population, but it's really important to provide those supports to, you know, a small populate, even if it's a small population. So we're trying to support organizations with these funds that may not historically have been engaged in the Medicaid system or in this type of funding.
Thank you. And I see a comment that I think relates to what Lisa just said. It's important to consider that small organizations truly lack capacity to apply for the funding. And it is inequitable for these organizations to put the time and energy into applying for nothing. I think that's one of the reasons why we are here today, wanting your unvarnished thoughts about, I think we're about to switch gears and talk about the application of what we've mocked up so far. And I think this is a really valuable time for you all to let us know if we're on the right track or if there are things that we can continue to work on.
Yep, exactly.
Which might be my cue to move us forward. I do see a new, oh, wow, I think we have finally, we've hit the nerve where people are ready to participate. This is excellent. Thank you. A question about subcontracting with HRSN funding, is it possible to subcontract?
Yes, so recognizing, you know, to Carissa's point above, if there are organizations that want to partner with other organizations and, and applying for funding, that is totally appropriate.
And then I'm going to go to the question in the chat and then the hand. The question is, will the new community-based organizations need to get a certificate of approval to become Medicaid providers?
Lisa will have to answer that question. I'm not sure the answer to that.
Yeah, there, this, um, I will just be really transparent that this is all a, a big focus of work that we're in right now. And that is really understanding kind of the federal rules and regulations by which we have to adhere. I'm trying to keep this as low barrier for organizations as possible. So we're really working through that right now. I'm hoping to get it finalized and bring that detail, well, we will get it finalized, hoping to get it finalized soon. And we will bring the, the detail back to you all. I am hesitant to say when we will bring that back because I do not know the, the schedule. I know you, there's a schedule for these meetings, so we, we definitely will bring it back. But I don't want to provide details until they land and, and are validated.
That's fair. Oh, did someone speak up? Natasha, I'd like to go to you next.
Um, so I'm with Multnomah County Developmental Disabilities. And we are interested in serving the developmental disability population in Multnomah County through this program. But our clients have OHP through all the CCOs. So would there be a way that you would see that it would make sense for an organization like us who wants to help roll these services out to our population? It's a, it's a finite group of folks that become eligible for our services, you know, but we really want to try and create some streamlined access points for them. And if possible, to participate as a community-based organization. I'm just not sure how that would make sense if we're only able to deliver services to those clients that have the particular CCO that we choose to contract with if we were to go that route. So just wondering if you had any thoughts on that type of situation?
I think that's a great example of something we need to think about. I, I will say just for clarity Natasha, if you apply to a specific CCO for funds, it doesn't necessarily mean that you can only provide services going forward to their members. So fee-for-service members, for example, are included in the HRSN services. And, you know, applying to a certain CCO doesn't mean that you're restricted to apply to then in the future, provide those services to only their members. And hopefully that.
Okay. Okay. That would be great. So we could serve other members of other CCOs, even though we're only contracting with one. That would be ideal if that was possible.
I, yeah, I just, I, Suzanne, you're kind of really getting exactly at the point that I just really want to underscore. And that is that, again, these are Medicaid benefits. So fee for, all fee for service and all, all CCO members will be eligible if they meet the eligibility criteria. So this is a very separate pot of funds. You could apply to one or more CCOs for this, these capacity building funds. But you will be, you know, just as every Medicaid provider is required to provide the services unto all, you know, CCOs and their eligible members. This, this would be the, the same. It is not a, like a separate contract just for HRSN services. It is part of their Medicaid benefit package. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking like down the road, like not just the build, the capacity building, but the actual delivery of services like ongoing, you know, if we would be able to serve people from other CCOs like Kaiser, OHSU, or whatever, if we only contracted with like Care Orient, you know, or just how messy that gets for us. Or, or if, if there's openness to us serving other members, but we are only contracting with one CCO. Cause there are like five different ones or more, I think six maybe that serve Multnomah County area. So our clients have all of them, you know, and probably open cards too. So just trying to think how that would make sense for us to try, you know, to participate.
Thank you, Natasha. How do you all feel about us talking through the application a little bit and then pausing for? As well, enhance.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
Um, so now we'll go kind of over the specifics of the standard application template that we're requiring CCO, CCOs to use. As I mentioned earlier, we have some overarching principles and goals that guided the design of this application as it is currently. But we're really are intentional about wanting to keep the application components simple and clear. We want your input on whether we've done that so far. And as part of our process and designing the application, we implemented and really tried to emulate a lot of the learnings from our OHA colleagues in public health and in the CPoP, the Community Partner Outreach Program and their grant programs that they've been really improving upon year after year. I know that many of you have been a part of those grant programs. And so going forward, we hopefully have learned from what you've been going through and supporting them on. So. Uh, next slide is an overview of the application at a high level. We're going to go into each component more deeply in the next few slides. But at a high level, we'll ask, the application will have some general applicant information confirm that they're eligible to apply for these funds. And then there'll be questions on the current work of the applicant organization, such as what counties and populations they serve and what kinds, what type of language access they provide. And then the specific request justification for the funds will go into those four allowable use categories that they'll be requesting the funds for and how specifically they'll use the funding. And then there's additional questions on what steps the organization has taken or will they take to become an HRSN service provider? How the organization plans to sustain the activities after funding ends? And then confirmations that the funding that they're applying for is not duplicative across other funding streams. So we can go, go to the next slide, which will then go a little bit deeper into some of the application criteria. So as I mentioned, the applicant information is pretty straightforward. Their organization name and the point of contact and mailing address. Then the eligibility criteria, the applicant must meet the, the following. So can they provide or provide support for HRSN services to Medicaid members? Eligible Medicaid members. Will they contract with CCOs or with an open card to provide the HRSN services? Are they financially stable? And is, are they, is the organization a community capacity building fund eligible provider type? And on the right side here, you see the eligible provider types that we mentioned earlier on in another slide. Are there questions in the chat we need to post for? I'll just keep going.
I think a question over whether this application is a final application or a draft?
The application that we're reviewing is currently draft format. And so that's why we're here today. We would love any feedback that you have on it.
Thank you.
So the next section will be who the agency intends to serve. So it'll ask applicants to talk about their organization, like such as which counties they, so that they work with. What's their current working relationship within those counties? So getting it kind of geographically, where are they serving? What work is being supported currently or proposed within those counties? How the priority populations will benefit from their work? And how they intend to build additional relationships in counties if none exist yet. So if they're going to draft, you know, propose to work in a different county and they don't yet have a relationship in that county, then how do they intend to build that relationship? And then the, what are the organization's capacity to speak or write in languages other than English? Okay, and so the next slide, what you're seeing on this slide are the two groups of populations that applicants will be asked to respond to in terms of who they'll be serving. So Lisa mentioned on the left side, the population groups that will be served through the HRSN services. These are the covered populations that were defined with CMS and Oregon in our Medicaid waiver. So they are young adults with special healthcare needs, adults and youth discharged for, from an institution for mental disease, adults and youth released from incarceration, youth involved with child welfare, individuals transitioning to dual status Medicaid and Medicare, individuals who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, and individuals with a high-risk clinical need in a region experiencing extreme weather and that's specific to the climate services. And then on the right-hand side are the priority populations. These were called out in the Public Health Equity Grant Program and cover both, really the priority populations that are in Oregon statute, called out in Oregon statute as priority populations with an addition of a number of priority populations such as rural communities, faith communities, houses, communities, et cetera. Any questions on these slides or this slide in particular, the populations? And before I move on to the next slide, which is about some background information, I'm curious if there's anything that you think we may have missed or anything that should be modified in the sections that I covered so far?
This is Anna, and I wonder if you can explain a little bit more about individuals transitioning to dual status?
Yeah, so with some individuals may have Medicaid only, and then when they have certain changes in health status, they may transition to what's considered dual-eligible, meaning that they're eligible for both Medicaid and Medicare at the same time. Does that help answer your question?
Go ahead, Lisa.
It does. Thank you.
I was just going to add, just for information, that the HRSN services covered populations is, are the populations that are allowable per CMS. So that, that is not something that we are able to adjust or change, just to kind of provide some additional context.
Thank you. And I was just going to add in, and I put it in the chat, but I'll say it out loud, is one common time that you will see people become newly duly eligible for Medicare and Medicaid is when they turn 65. But that's definitely not the only situation where that happens. And then I do see a comment and then a follow-up request for us to address the, the subjective nature of the minimum eligibility criteria. And I'll circle back to you up here too. Is this something we have to take back? Or Suzanne, are you speaking in muted?
No, I'm just wondering, is there a question? I, I'm not sure I understand the question. I need some more clarification.
Carissa, do you want to speak up? You're welcome to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have much else to say other than that it seems very subjective when you mention financially stable, especially if you're wanting smaller organizations. I think this funding could really help them. I don't know what the financially stable, what you're looking for. I, I just don't know what that means. And I feel like that's extremely subjective. And I forgot what the other two criteria were, but they also seemed quite subjective as well.
Uh, the other criteria were, can they provide HRSN services to Medicaid members? And will they contract with CCOs or with an open card to provide the services? And then are they an eligible provider type? So the, those, the eligible provider type is, as Lisa just mentioned, a requirement of CC, of CC, well, that was around something else. But it is a requirement of CMS. And then, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. We, we maybe. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. We we maybe need to have some more clarity around what that means. Um, thanks for bringing that up.
And I think part of what I might, you can let me know if I'm reading into this wrong. But is that it's it's very easy to prove that you are financially stable or you can work with CCOs if you already ha- are very established. And so I'm seeing this really particularly to the folks who are seeking to move into. This realm or these relationships and these services. And if it's unclear what success looks like, then folks who maybe might. Might actually choose not to pursue it because they're not sure it applies to them or things like that. Am I on the right track with that with verbalizing that concern?
Yes, that's exactly it. I think it's just, um. It's kind of like a read the read between the lines situation, it seems like, um, that's just. I would love for it to be addressed um. To make sure that it's not so subjective and that it is open to newer, smaller organizations.
Yeah, that's a real great point, Chris, and thank you for bringing that up. We can put some clarification in the application around, especially on the the uh, evaluation. Of the applications, we can make sure to be real clear on what's expected from the response to that question.
Thank you, and I promised I'd go to the hands next, so go ahead, Pierre.
Um, my question is about the definition of an institution for mental disease. Does that include inpatient and outpatient uh, mental health providers? Does that include substance use disorder providers or what is a definition of institution for mental disease?
That's a great question. I'm gonna have a not a not very satisfying answer, but a promise to come back with an answer. Um, we are um, in the process right now of um, defining that with CMS. Um, so we um, are certainly trying to make that broad, um, but we uh, have conversations that we need to work through with CMS and um. You know, we'll be able to share that, um. Uh, sorry, I was just thinking about a resource that might be um, helpful for you, which is our draft um, HRSN Services Protocol. Um, which I can put in the link and that kind of that provides some definition. Um, it is very draft and it is um, how we are, you know, in discussion and negotiation with CMS right now.
Yes, that would be great.
Thank you. I do just want to call out that there were questions or at least one question about adding different or new populations, and I think this is a point where we don't have that flexibility right now. Um, these are the populations that we are working in conjunction with um. CMS with our federal partners to define as where we're starting with this work. And then I'm going to do two questions that are written down and then the hand. I'm trying to get these in the right chronological order for when they were. Asked, um, if an organization may not qualify as financially stable. Would this potentially be an opportunity to partner with another uh, organization in their application to give smaller organizations? Who may serve a specific priority population more opportunities to engage? I paraphrase that a bit, but I think I got to the heart of it.
Um. I I guess I want to um, maybe just share a little bit of transparency around some of um, some of the requirements around these funds. Um, it, you know, we do have, we are really trying to balance the tension between. Small organizations and trying to have a very low barrier process and what we're required to do um, in terms of. Um, requirements back to CMS, so there 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 will be some level of financial. Stability that's required, but I I really appreciate feedback on kind of language and maybe examples. Um, that we can pull from, we've, um, I'm not sure if Suzanne had mentioned this, but we really looked at some of the. Um, granting programs during the COVID um, period of time. Because we heard from this group again, which was really useful, that um, that process worked well for people. Um, and so we we followed up to. To try to model after that. Um, there is definitely a lot of room for uh, organizations to collaborate. Um, and apply for these funds together or to subcontract. Um, I think if you all have ideas that you want to bring forward that we kind of want to think through how we can help support that, that's really welcomed as well.
Thank you. Um, do organizations have to be 501(c)(3)? Looks like that that is not a requirement here. I think we may be caught up, I, hmm, the hand went away. There was a hand raised. Did someone want to speak up? Okay. We have just a few more slides, should we continue?
Yeah.
All right.
We have just a few more slides on the application itself, and then there's a couple of slides on the budget template. Um, so back to the application, um, here are some. You know, applicants will describe some background information. Uh, such as how they'll use the funding to prepare to provide HRSN services to the priority pu- to the priority populations. How they will provide the service delivery in a culturally responsive way. What their previous service provider experiences are. Um, related to the four uh, or the the four areas of HRSN services, so housing, climate, nutrition and outreach and engagement. Um, and then what, which of the HRSN services they intend to provide? And then um, the next section of the application, yeah, Carissa.
Yeah, if you could go back to the slide you were just on. Um, again, I think this is another read between the lines, like, don't bother if you haven't done it when you're certainly capable of doing it. I think this is again, just supporting existing organizations, which I'm all for it, let's lift up what's already happening, but if we want new players in the game. Um, this just does not seem like the opportunity for that, but. But I'm pretty sure that is what you guys, your intention is, so, um. When you're talking about, you know, if they've done it already and having them have to prove that, that. Again, a small organization that doesn't, already doesn't have the capacity. It's kind of like already telling you, like, you're not going to get this funding unless you already exist doing this. So it just does not make sense to me. And it's really frustrating because there are organizations trying to get off the ground like mine. We are capable of doing this, developing this effort with the funding. Gained from this, if we're able to get it, but again, it's like not gonna happen.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you. I really appreciate your input. Thank you, Carissa, and I I think. I don't, I think you're right, that is our intention, and I also think that the the wording of the sliding isn't, slides aren't exactly what is in the application itself, so I'm like. Reading the, you know, questions that it's referring to, and so, for example, one of the questions is describe how the applicant. Will use the funding to provide services, so it's, you know, how will you intend, how do you intend to do it, right? And then, you know, how do you provide culturally responsive and specific services to your populations of focus, but. Not how do you provide HR and SN services, because you haven't done that yet, right? So it's it's a little bit about designing how you will do it and how you intend to do it. So you're absolutely right, that's our intention, but what I'm hearing also is that we need to be really clear in our language. And in our guidance documents around deciding, you know, decision making post. Review of the or during the review of the applications. Um, we have to use the right language to support our intentions, so thank you for highlighting that.
And I see a call out in the chat to to define what previous service provider experience means.
Yeah, so I think, you know, if the organization has um, experience connecting. Um, Medicaid recipients to services. Or if the organization is an organization that already provides support around housing or to the houseless population, for example, or to. Um, youth and foster care, working with youth and foster care, um, explaining what they, what their experience is as an organization in the past, what they've done. Um, to help lift up their application. And I just want to see if that's a new hand, Carissa, or if your hand was left up from your last.
I'm actually glad it's still up, because I did want to say, again, as a new organization or smaller one, you know, for example, we've done a needs assessment. So we haven't even launched services yet, but our needs assessment. Really directed us to wanting to pursue this because it's needed, even just for the other. Topic, the needs assessment was on a specific topic, but we found that, you know, if we want people to get preventative care, these are the things, they need their basic needs met. And so, again, we have not, we're trying to be really thoughtful about how we're filling gaps and developing our services as a new organization. With, you know, our own personal experience from other, you know, but not the organization's experience of delivering services. So again, I think that's another, just even asking that or requiring that would make me not want to apply, because why would I bother, you know? Even though this is something I would love to help develop the organization to do and help the communities around here. But it seems like, why would I waste the time and energy?
Um, I'll just provide, um, uh, again, some additional information, and it makes me think we also. Need to do a better job with our timeline, and that is that there will be multiple rounds of um, this app, this funding available. So um, uh, you know, it may not be the right time in the initial um, funding cycle for your organization, but there will be at least one more. Um, in the following year, and really it's an assessment of um, how the. How the, you know, how much, if the funds have already been expended in two years, we may not have a third, we might have an option for a third. Um, we really just have an allowable, um. Pot of funds, um, and so that's the, that's the amount that is there, but that might be an opportunity um, as well, this. Later, later years of funding, so just wanted to add that.
Yeah, that's not helpful for me. I mean, we need the funding as soon as possible, but thanks.
I do see, um. Do you see a question about, um, and I'm not sure if we're going to go into it today, or we're gonna have to come back with this. Um, because I know we have a few more slides that do talk about things like numbers. Um, do we have anything we can share about the metrics or expectations on the reporting side? So that we do know if people are accomplishing the goals of the waiver? Oh, Suzanne, you're muted.
Yeah, I I was thinking out loud to myself. I cannot even share it. Um, no, I was wondering if the question was about the metrics of the waiver itself or the metrics of the application review? That Nick was asking about.
Interesting, so um, I'll just offer again some additional information. Um, we do not have, um, every waiver is required to have an external evaluation. Um, each state designs an evaluation and that's approved by CMS. There are new requirements around HRSN. We've only received a draft, don't, do not have a final um, version of what is going to be required for HRSN. Um, so that's, this is a little bit of an unknown and something that we certainly want to bring back. For these funds, right now, we have reporting for what the funds included. In the application process for what the funds are being used for, but we do not have anything beyond that in terms of like service provisions for these types of organizations. Um, the reason I kind of give all of that context is that there may be some requirements that we are, that are unknown yet. Um, for organizations to meet metrics, it will not be tied to these funds, though. These funds will, it is a separate process and it is a separate um, program than the service provision, so I hope that's helpful.
I do wonder, I know that there is some talk. Of more of the details in the next few slides that might start to hit on this. I'm trying to figure out whether to continue to engage in this conversation or go through the last few slides and then circle back, because we might be answering.
Go for the next few slides, but I did want to um, address Sarah's point, which was that the application review metrics would be helpful prior to. The application process and absolutely those will be available for people to understand what they're, you know, what the metrics are being used to judge the applications by.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so. This slide is around, um, the applicants will be asked to list, and it's really a. Bullet, a checklist in terms of um, which of the four allowable uses they are applying to and what specific allowable expense. They're going to be asking for funding for. Um, it's pretty simple, and then there's, you know, um, an opportunity to kind of. Talk a little bit more about that, but it's it's a checklist that has been approved through CMS in terms of what the allowable expenses can get paid for. Um, and then in each section, each of the four sections, technology development and business or operational practices, workforce development, and then outreach, education and partner convening. Um, they're asked to explain why the funding is needed, how the funding will be used to build their capacity to provide services and. Again, what their experience is in this domain, and if it's around gathering information and understanding the needs of their community or being culturally specific to their community. Those are perfectly appropriate um, experiences to share in an application. And then um, there's additional questions that are around the steps they have taken or will take to pursue a contract with CCOs or with open card programs to provide HRSN services. And then on what their approach for sustaining activities after funding ends will be. And then um, the next slide is the last slide in the application. Questions. Um, at the end of the application, there is a confirmation section. And applicants will need to confirm the following, that they've not received duplicate funding through another program. That uh, the funding will only be spent on the allowable uses that are listed above. Um, that they'll submit the progress reports to the CCO in which they applied for the funding of the community capacity building funds. Um, that they understand that if there are issues around poor performance or fraud, that their funding could be paused or ended. Um, or have to be returned. Um, that the applicant will commit to alerting the CCO if they're unable to perform any of the activities that they called out in the application. And that they'll attest, you know, that everything that they've listed in the application is true and accurate to the best of their knowledge. So that is the overview of all the um, components of the application. And I do see a couple of hands up.
Yeah, Pierre, yours was up first.
Yeah, so my question goes again, um, there's so much additional information that is needed. In terms of the application to become an RSN provider, does that mean? So if you look for a contract with a CCO. Uh, do you have to have a Medicaid number? If you need a Medicaid number, you have to have currently a certificate of approval. For that certificate of approval, you have to fulfill an application that takes six to twelve months to get. Prior to get a Medicaid number, so these are all these, these questions that. Or but possible barriers to uh, for a lot of people to access these uh, these funds, if these are requirements that CCO will have. Uh, to be able to become an RSN provider. So I wonder. How do you, how do you gonna manage this, because this seems pretty complex? And what is, what are then the the billing procedures uh, to provide the services? To provide the services, are, are you, are we then utilizing the existing Medicaid billing structures? Or will there be new billing structure for this or not? It's a big task.
Yeah, yeah. Those are all really great points and it makes complete sense to me that it's hard to consider, you know, applying for funds if you don't know what it is, is expected of you. We're, we're really aware of that. As Lisa pointed out, we will need to come back for sure with the provider requirements and commit to doing that by the end of this year. In terms of what is required and specific, you know, answering those questions around, um, provider qualifications and application process. And Lisa, do you want to add something?
Well, I would just add that, and, and, um, again, this may be irritating nuance, but I, I want to provide information that we have, and that is that, um, depending on, we have a phased approach for these, um, benefits. So climate, um, is going to be available first, then housing and nutrition. And because of the phased approach, there will be different, um, processes for invoicing. Uh, and so it will look different depending on, um, the implementation phase out, um, and kind of what services it is. And so that's another level down in the details that we'll want to bring back and share. Certainly the provider qualifications, um, we will have before the end of this year. And then climate as well, kind of what it looks like to be a service provider. Providing climates, supports and services, um, we'll be able to kind of walk everyone through what that looks like. Nutrition and housing will be a little bit farther, um, out.
And I do, goodness, I wish we had enough time and enough of the subject matter expertise here to really dig into that. And I know that it is, well, here's the part where I will do my own stump speech because Lisa and Suzanne are here, which is, we would love to get those topics about like any of the details around onboarding, around requirements to the next HRSN partner session, which, um, may not be, I think it's likely to be in December, just because of the Thanksgiving holiday makes it difficult. But I know we have no shortage of things to bring here and to bring the right folks from in, inside the waiver so that we can have people speak intelligently about it as opposed to me riffing on it because I don't want to do that. Um, but Carissa, your hand is up.
Yeah, again, um, if you guys could go back to the last slide, it's, which I do appreciate all of Pierre's concerns he voiced. Um, but yeah, I think it's related to that and where it talks about the second to the last bullet points, um, steps they have taken or will take to pursue a contract with CCOs or open card program to provide services. Um, again, I feel like that's something that you're expecting them to have this knowledge or experience doing this. And it seems like, you know, that would come into consideration for their application, which I just don't think is fair. And so just wanted to point that out. I don't know if there's going to be technical assistance around that, or again, as a new organization, a small organization that has not done that, are we, we're again at a disadvantage because of this? Or we need to find out how to do this? Or, you know, I just wouldn't want it to be something that's held against the application. And that's it, I guess.
I think from my point of view, and once again, I am here to engage, I'm not a subject matter expert, so please correct me, Lisa and Suzanne. That point has, absolutely has to be collaborative with CCOs and open card folks also providing this information to people. It can't be saying that we are only putting on our potential providers to handle. Like this is something where we need to be very clear on our, our side, what that means to us so that they can show their, like, everyone can show we're able to meet in the middle. And that's me as an idealist, perhaps speaking about what I hope is true, but I'm going to put it out there into the world. And, uh, Lisa and Suzanne, you can let me know if I'm off base or not.
I'm with you, Jessica, as the idealist. Really have anything additional to add. I mean, I think the intention is that we're, you know, putting it on, uh, CCOs to make sure that they have a wide net of HRSN providers to, to really serve the entire region and that they serve as well as fee for service members. And so, you know, I think that it's a, it's a two-way street and there's support, you know, from OHA to help the CCO develop that network. As well as that's kind of the purpose of this funding is to allow organizations to figure out what it is they need to become HRSN, to build capacity to become the HRSN provider, service provider.
Yeah, if I could just say, so it seems like the responsibility is being put on the CBO or whoever's applying as it is, you know, in the application that they're supposed to explain this. When there is a power differential, the CCOs clearly have the power. And I mean, just being, speaking realistically, and as a new organization, you know, you can show up and try to be part of something, but if they're not open to new people or new friends at the table to eat lunch with, you're not going to eat lunch with them. And I don't think that's fair.
I do wonder if there's anything we can share here about what we're asking of CCOs? Or maybe if we can show any of those deliverables, because I think we're painting an incomplete picture here. And I think that is, uh, it's not, it's not serving us well to just be painting the picture of the application process without the wider context.
A great point, Jessica. And certainly a gap in preparing these materials and we can certainly provide that.
It's a never-ending quest to find more and share more. So I think, uh, I don't want to fault you for bringing what we have right now because we're, we have so much to share in so little time to do it. Kimberly, I saw your hand has been up for a while and then I'll circle back to the chat.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around everything. And so what, so what I hear that we're discussing right now, and please clarify, is the application for community-based organizations to get technical support, correct? Like, that's all of this application. And I feel like we're having the discussion a little backwards because what it, you know, like, what is it that? Because I know that we were discussing like the applications for SRN providers. So what does that application to become a provider even look like? You know, because we discussed that they don't, um, that, um, like, for example, for, um, social needs, uh, or there was the other services, they need to have like, um, a diagnosis. So like HRSN services providers don't have to be giving diagnoses. Like they're not those kind of like doctor. Do you get what I'm saying? Um, so I'm going off on a tangent. Has the application for becoming an SRN provider been established? And is that like finalized? Because I feel like this conversation to even get here, like, I just feel a little back.
And, um, Suzanne, this is a, a great point. And I'm so happy that we have time to provide some clarity and get feedback. Suzanne, can I ask you to go to the timeline? So
That's solely actually.
Just to explain, you know, like our timing and bringing, um, this information to you all, um, is really to, we were really focused on, and it sounds like we, we should have brought, um, broader detail on the, kind of the scope of work of the actual grant program that the CCOs are going to be managing around these funds. But we were really focused on the application and kind of the process that CBOs would engage in really wanting to get your feedback on that part, although I wanted on all of it, but I, I see where we kind of created a gap here. Um, so I want to try to reassure people and then create a broader understanding of the timeline as well. So, um, the grant program, um, that the CCOs are going to run, OHA will have individual contracts with each CCO. And we are, um, planning to, um, execute those in December of this year. In January of next year, CCOs will have requirements around creating um, technical assistance as out, as well as outreach and engagement to ensure that providers in their service area are aware of this funding opportunity and are able to apply um, for these funds. Um, so that is a requirement, um, a, a, as a part of this program. Uh, in March and April, that will be the window. So we're hoping, you know, we give two months to kind of get the word out. We're going to be trying to get the word out as well. CCOs are going to need to provide some technical assistance. Um, and then March and April is the period of time where, um, organizations can apply for these funds. And the reason that I'm kind of trying to go back to this timeline is that in the meantime, we have deep work, work happening right now around the provider qualifications. A lot of these great questions that you all are are asking, and that will be released by the end of this year. We are just kind of deep in the weeds. We are, you know, getting, um, federal rules and regulations identified um, around those provider, um, regulations, and then also kind of thinking through the process. So that is information that we plan to provide, um, out by the beginning of, um, January, end of this year for climate providers. We will have some of that detail for housing and nutrition as well, um, but may not have all kind of the invoices and billing processes um, finished for nutrition and housing. So I'm hoping that's helpful. We've got a little time. We're, we're bringing this to you all early because we wanted to really get feedback on this application process, but, um, completely here, everyone, that it's very, it's a difficult conversation without all of these pieces of detail. So appreciate you all kind of your patience and your ability to engage with us on this. It's been really valuable.
Also kind of take the liberty of popping us over to the implementation timeline too, because these are, these are linked. And so there is climate benefits do go live in advance of these funds, but the rest of the, the nutrition and the housing services. Those are scheduled for late 2024 into 2025. So I wanted to give that context because I'm realizing we haven't shown the slide today yet. So I wanted to share that too. And I also wanted to say, I saw someone call out outreach and engagement, ask when those go live. And I'm wondering, Lisa, if I can ask you to talk a little bit about how those integrate into the other benefits and services we're talking about. Or I can take an attempt, but you might have to correct me.
Yeah, I, um, sorry, could I just back up for one minute? Because I see this question in the chat about services being rolled out before processes. So again, um, what we're talking about is, is not funding, is not the services. Um, and those processes will be, um, developed and finalized before the service is provided.
And I think
That's helpful.
Yeah, with maybe a small caveat for climate is going to be a little bit different. But absolutely, as we're talking about continuing to build out housing, nutrition and the outreach and engagement services that go alongside them. And I do want to say that outreach and engagement services will be implemented alongside the services they're here to support. So we will be building out what outreach and engagement is included as housing goes live and as nutrition goes live. They, it isn't a separate category that has its own timeline. It's, it's, uh, woven throughout. I hope that's making sense. Am I making sense? Okay. Now that I've gone rogue and I'm just wandering throughout my PowerPoint. I'm not sure, are there, are there questions we haven't gotten to? Um, I do see a great one about, um, ways in which these specific contracts can potentially reduce the burden on CBOs. And if there's anything we can say about that compared to maybe some of the more traditional Medicaid pathways.
I guess is that specific to the HRSN services or these funds?
Oh, that's a good question.
Um, the intention with the funds is that it's, you know, with this community capacity building fund is that it's an application process. It's this, you know, simple grant that gets approved and then the funding goes out as, when the reporting is how the funds were, as Lisa mentioned already, that you know, the reporting is how much was spent and, and you'll see the budget here in a second, but, and on what? And making sure that it was in their allowable use categories. But if it's specific to the actual services, um, we might need Lisa to answer that question.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Do you want me to attempt?
Yeah. Can you just state the question?
Yeah, and I attempted to, um, paraphrase it, which could be the problem here, which is, sorry, we've been busy in the chat. Um, I'm going to just read it exactly as it is. Are the CCOs considering creating specific contract requirements for CBOs that will reduce the likely burden on the CBOs? I think this might apply both to the community capacity building funds contract itself, as well as the provision of services and becoming a HRSN provider. But this is my guess. Sarah, you can keep me honest if I'm missing it.
Can you repeat, um, your response?
Around, go ahead.
Sorry, Sarah. Would it be possible to rephrase the question? I'm not, I'm not we want to make sure we give you the right answer and we're not sure that we're tracking.
Sure, let me scroll back to there. So, okay, so the questions in the eligibility are like, will we agree to contract? Um, I think another explanation was, you know, are we willing to, I don't know, apply for to be providers or will we within a certain timeframe, that kind of thing. And I think, um, similar to many of, um, Carissa's comments are that it's not that we wouldn't want to or be willing to, we're just not sure if we're able to. And my question is, are CBOs being, I hear that, uh, CB, CCOs are being required to, make these connections and collaborations and find a way to make it work. And so my question is, will their requirements for CBOs in regards to contracts be different so that our, um, it reduces the burden on CBOs that may not, um, meet high-level contracting requirements? Does that make sense?
I think it does. And, um, I'm going to, again, try to provide some information, um, that might be helpful context. We are, um, we have this as an allowable amount of money from CMS to use. It is solely for the use, um, of organizations that will be HRSN service providers. So that is a requirement of these funds by CMS. Um, so we don't have the ability to provide these funds, um, via CCOs to organizations not providing HRSN services or not intending to provide. They can attest to the intention. Um, but that is the requirement for the use of these funds.
Okay, that helps. And then ideally, so CBOs that are not currently HRSN service providers would need to know what is required to become one.
Yeah. And, and just to be clear, I mean, like HRSN service provider, there really aren't an HRSN service provider in existence because we're kind of, we're defining this right now, right? Um, so, you know, um, we're, we're not asking for something that's not an existent. It really is like, how will? Um, it is, um, thinking through, you know, that service providers wouldn't need these funds if they were ready to go on day one. Um, and that's why a big part of our, um, demonstration included, um, these funds because it was really known that this was going to be a challenge. And we are just looking for opportunities to, to, to reduce barriers where we can, but we are, we do have requirements, um, from the, at a federal level that we're. But we are, we do have requirements from the, at a federal level that we're obligated to as well.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And I do see in the chat, I think this is the problem with, we, gosh, I think if we had five full days to walk through every single part of this, it would start to click better. But because we only have a couple hours, we take a little bit at a time and we try to learn as much as we can about the one little piece. None of them are little either, actually. And so I see a question about whether this is about the provision of the services itself and how those are being paid for. And that is not what we came here to talk about today. We can't not talk about it because it's integral to this conversation as well. But everything that we've talked about with this application process, this is about getting funds to get started with the work as opposed to the funds that are going to do the continuation of the work. And the questions about what it means to be an HRSN provider with a CCO, with open card. That's the next step. And I think we absolutely need to get to the next step, but I think that we're trying to do it all at once right now. And I want to, I want to offer for us that we pause on some of the things around how, how these services will be built. How people are getting paid, reimbursed and onboarded so that we can bring complete, correct, good guidance to you next time. Just because I do worry that if I'm trying to riff on what I think is true, but I don't have the right folks in the room, I don't want to cause any harm here. And I also want to give Suzanne and Lisa an opportunity to finish up the budget portion of this. But I, now I've been talking for a while and I'm rambling, but I hope that kind of helps. Like, we're just taking one small part of this and that's part of why it's so confusing. Rolling out of the services and paying for the services is a separate conversation, a really important conversation. And so I'm going to pause and see if that helped or made things worse for everyone. And maybe give Suzanne an opportunity to finish the last few slides so we can continue to have conversation. And, and thanks for letting me redirect us a little.
Yeah, that's great, Jessica. I think your comments always are helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on. We only have three more slides here really on the application template and the budget. This is specifically around the budget template. And all these slides are pretty much the same. So, you know, similar to a standard required application, which we've gotten a lot of input and feedback on, which is great. We will have a standardized, we will expect CCOs to use a standard budget template. The purpose seeks to be as straightforward as possible. And you'll see, you know, on the slide and all the next two slides is a screenshot of kind of the core elements of the draft template. So I'm actually going to, we'll go to the next slide because they're all really the same. This slide in the middle here. This section is broken into the, what you'll see is the four allowable use categories that the template, so the applicant in the template application will say, you know, we're going to provide, we need funding for expanding technology. Or we need funding for workforce development. And then in this, then this budget will have to connect to the application where they'll say how much they need and for what purposes. And then the last slide is at the end, just kind of a pretty standard certification of the budget being true and accurate and kind of to cover things. So if we could just go back to the last slide, because I think that's one that really highlights the most important piece, or maybe even number 21, that has all of them in there. Yeah, that's great. So, you know, just on this, are there any questions or reactions to this budget template? Or any changes you would make to this, to make it more user friendly? And yes, again, you know, kind of as I mentioned with the application, part of our homework to prepare these applications and budget template was to use other things across OHA that we've learned have worked over time and have been adjusted over time from our public health. COVID grants and equity grants and share grants, things like this. So that is how we helped, what helped us design these templates. So thanks for the comments, Sarah. I see Judy has her hand up.
Thanks Suzanne. I think one of the things, we, we worked with OHA on a couple of other grants, like you mentioned, community engagement and et cetera. For, for us, and I think other CEOs perhaps, that would be helpful is there usually is a separate instruction sheet that helps a CBO think about what are the category of things you should put in there. So as an example, when you're thinking about staffing costs, don't just think about staffing costs, but think about your employer taxes, the fringe benefits, if you will. When you're thinking about technology, you will have to think about when you have staff that that's dedicated to this. You know, how much they're going to cost in terms of laptops, mobile communication devices. So perhaps just having some, at least some general category, I think that's particularly helpful for smaller CBOs who may not be used to thinking this globally for all of the costs that need to go associated with running this program.
That's terrific, Judy. Thank you. That's great input. I think that would absolutely be something that will be on our website that we're developing right now. That'll be really specific to this funding process. And it's a great suggestion of what we'll have on there. Thank you.
And then oh, go ahead.
Yep, go ahead.
A question, how will OHA ensure or incentivize CCOs to fund smaller CBOs that may need more funding or funding in more areas than established CCOs, CBOs, sorry.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm scrolling through our scope of services that Lisa has kind of alluded to a number of times that are the requirements across what OHA expects from the CCOs. And there is a requirement on their outreach to reach out to organizations that they are not already in contract with. So that's one way. And there's probably others that I'm not thinking about, Lisa.
Oh, I was just going to let Belle know that her feline friend, oh, there. That was great. Decided to join us on the, the call today, which is always fun.
So sorry.
It kind of is.
She loves this stuff.
Uh, Carissa, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, based on what was just said, it sounds like, again, the CCOs have all the power and it's putting it in their hands to maybe find a needle in a haystack or whatever. And that's their metric. But why not empower CBOs where again, you know, not necessarily having to put the responsibility, but having that as a creating equity and giving CBOs the access to people at the CCOs. And then incentivizing the CCOs or changing the metric to say, you know, whether it's, because if you're putting it all on the CCOs to reach out, like, yeah, that's great. But at the same time, what if they're not aware of? For example, my organization or, you know, I'd love to be empowered to reach out to a point person at the CCO to connect with them and have that opportunity and create that, that potential. And that it would be counted for their metric. Otherwise, they wouldn't have any kind of reason to connect with me if that's not, oh, you know, they didn't reach out to me, so.
No, that makes absolute sense, Carissa. Thank you. I, you actually brought up a point that I, we didn't bring up and that there will be a point of contact at each CCO. And we'll make sure to have that available on our website with all the information about these funds and how to apply. And, you know, the information Judy just brought up. So there will be a point of contact so that absolutely it's a two-way street. We expect CCOs to reach out to other new organizations that could provide these services specifically in culturally inappropriate ways and specific ways. And then also you will have an opportunity to know who to contact within the CCO about applying.
Yeah, and just to give a little tidbit, I mean, I've had a director, like, or an administrator at a health department try to connect me, a warm handoff to a CCO. And my email was blocked from the CCO. So I think there's a bit of disconnect about how this really works in the real world and how open the CCOs are to partnering with new people, new organizations.
I can tell you that I'm, I'm also seeing questions about how will we know when this is available? And how do we connect if we don't have the CCO connections? And I think part, but not a full answer is that if you're here, then that means that you are definitely on our radar. And we will be, I mean, I will be shouting this from the rooftops once any opportunity for funding goes live. That's a small part of this is that we are trying to build spaces like this that aren't CCO centric to have these conversations and to build out ways in which we can be more communicative and better connect folks. And then I probably shouldn't riff too far in that direction, but you know, if you're having trouble, us folks at OHA definitely want to know about it. And I'll stop without getting on a soapbox, but I definitely hope that this is one place where we can continue to look into this and be on the same page. And, and it's not all going to be rosy, but we'll, we'll be here together to, to troubleshoot out what we can and see what we can do within the frameworks we have to work within. Okay, that's it for me.
Around the budget, otherwise that's really it for the informational slides. And we can, you know, encourage any more questions or comments.
I don't know if this was already said out loud, but I do see a comment about a more specific breakdown for each category could help this document be more clear for folks. And then I think, I think it's continuing to be very squishy for me at least, you know, the difference between what's in here. And how, I think until we paint the picture of what it means to be onboarded as a provider who is providing services and getting paid for those services, we're going to continue to struggle with that difference until we can paint that picture together. Uh, Judy, go ahead.
I put a com- comment or a question really in the chat, because it sounds like this will be more like a fee for service model. Or am I mistaken? That, so if that's the case, where will we build an indirect rate? Or indirect expenses?
Oh, the HRSN services will be provided through, so we are talking about the capacity funds right now. But the HRSN services will be provided to both open card members and through CCOs.
Okay, so it's not a fee for service? I'm sorry, I'm not following.
It is a fee for service model. And the, like, the billing processes, I think, sorry, I wasn't tracking on kind of what you were getting at. But the, the fee schedules and the billing processes will be shared at a, at a later meeting. They're in development and need to be approved by CMS as well.
So for the budget, should we assume an indirect rate?
I, I guess I'm confused about the, I, I'm confused about the question. Can you answer?
I, I can try. And so I'm going to explain it as in terms of other OHA contracts, community engagement or for vote or background service. So there's are the direct expenses, right, that we spend on the program, let's say for staff salary and fringe. As well as, you know, the services that goes directly to, if we're handing out, for example, air conditioners in climate resilience work, the cost of the air conditioning. Then there typically is, for the state right now, it's 10% of indirect rate that will cover, for example, because our staff uses our building. So there's a 10% rate that covers, if you will, the physical facility, the telephone, that, you know, our insurance cost, that general cost that's allocated to this program. I'm just cur- curious, where do I put that in the budget?
I am wondering, once again, and I'm finding it hard to separate these in my head, but community capacity building funds, which are the one-time initial investment to get rolling. Is there, I do notice nowhere in here is there a indirect or admin. Sometimes, you know, I've seen some grants that standardize on 12% or something like that. Is that something that is built into this or is that something that is not, we're not able to include in this particular opportunity? Cause it isn't, it isn't one of the dropdowns here.
Yeah, there, there is nothing about these funds that is about service provision. It is about what is needed to develop the capacity to provide the services. So the rates that are being developed to provide the services, that's a separate pot of money and separate process. It is not included in these funds and it should not be used for these funds. Clear?
And, and in addition, there is, there are some allowable underneath technology and underneath development of business. Technology doesn't really have anything related to administrative at all, but underneath development of business operations practices, there is an allowable box currently, if, if approved by CMS, it states administrative or overhead costs or office finishing necessary to perform HRSN duties or expand HRSN. So there are components within the categories around administrative costs. So in outreach and education, there's also administrative or overhead costs associated with outreach, education or convening. So it's really specific checkboxes for the application specific to what's been approved by CMS for the allowable uses of these funds.
So the short answer is the indirect portion is built into these categories to a certain extent. And that's why there isn't just separate section that's for a broad admin or indirect addition.
And I believe we put the link to the draft infrastructure protocol. And so that has the next layer of detail for what CMS, you know, what we've requested CMS to allow. So in terms of uses of these funds, it's really in that protocol and approved by CMS for what is allowable. It is not up to the discretion of the state. I hope that, I hope that gets at your question.
I can put that link in again if it's helpful, because it probably got lost deep in the chat. So I'll do that.
I do see a question that I don't think, I'm not sure if we've answered around, is there a specific minimum, maximum amount of funding that we know of, or is that still under consideration? I see, Lisa, that you said there will be one. Is that just, we, we know there is one, but we don't have those numbers to share right now?
Um, a maximum meant for an organization to receive. Did I, did I say that there will be one there? I don't, Suzanne, in our scope of work, do we have a minimum?
Oh, sorry, that was Suzanne, who said each CCO will have a not to exceed amount of funds to grow.
Yeah, and that's to the CCO getting the funds out. It's not specific to each application.
I think the question is asking about an organizational or an organi- does an organization have a max or a min amount? And I, we did not require that of the CCOs.
No.
Okay. Sorry for that immediate pivot. I just saw a question that was like, I didn't see an answer. So I, I pivoted to that while also trying to scroll through this attachment to see if I could find something to show you all on my screen. But my ability to multitask But um, my ability to multitask is apparently at its limit. Um, but I do see that Suzanne shared it. Um, so I think we have some clarity we can provide on indirect when it comes specifically to the community capacity building funds. And then I think it's a completely different, but also important conversation to have that around the services, once we're talking about that larger pot of money, that is the provision of services. Um, I'm going to read between the lines, saying, are we considering another informational session? I'm gonna turn this back to you all. Do you all want another informational session? Is that the ask? Because uh, we'd love to be responsive to, to you all. Okay. Immediate caps, I think that's a yes. Um, we will explore what we can do. I think that, yeah, this absolutely isn't the end of a conversation. And I also think there are times where I would love to figure out how you all in CCOs can have good conversations, because I don't want to get in the middle of things that can happen regionally that, that are gonna be productive and good. That's a part where being a state person, I, I'm never sure where, where exactly I need to stay out of the way and where I should help facilitate. Um, I do see some questions around climate rollout specifically, and I don't think I have good answers for that. And I'm, Lisa, can I put you on the spot?
Sure, I'm happy to answer the question. Let me just find it real quick.
Oh, yeah, um, will CBOs be included in the climate rollout in January? If so, what can CBOs expect as far as qualification activities, funding for these activities?
Yeah, it's, it's an unfortunate um, situation in terms of, um, so again, just to be really transparent, we are working with CMS right now to gain approval on the infrastructure protocol and the funding source, which is a DISHV funding source. Um, and until we um, receive approval, we actually don't have access to these funds. And so we've heard from CMS that they're committed to working with us to um, get those approvals by the end of this year. And so that makes, um, that, you know, allows us the ability to roll this out in the timeline that we provided. Um, it is not great for climates, um, for climate supports, and completely acknowledge that it is just kind of where, where we are at. Um, we feel like it's really important for um, CCOs to engage and provide TA um, to CBOs. Um, and so, um, you know, we've built in that part of this application um, and developed a funding window, or sorry, a funding timeline the best that we can. Um, but it is not perfect.
Oh, my goodness, we're pretty much at our time. That went by really fast, everyone, um. Pardon me as I go to my mandatory.
I'm sure glad we had two hours.
Yeah, I, we should just hang out all day, every day. Not that anyone wants that. Um, I know there's no actionable information on this slide, but uh, goodness, I would feel bad if we ended without saying out loud, "We really appreciate that you're here engaging with us. We really appreciate you asking the hard questions." Um, and if there's anything that we can be doing to make it easier, better, more productive for you all, please do not hesitate to reach out. Um, I know that it is not, um, it's not the most fun to look at one part of this giant project at a time when there's so much that we're trying to learn and do and be. Um, so I do also really appreciate your patience. Um, and we are trying very hard to be responsive to what we're hearing from you here and in other places. So um, I also invite you to, you know, like, let me know if I'm missing the mark on things. Let, let us know if there are things that we can continue to adjust. I know it's gonna be a little tough with the holidays, but we do have a, the next session planned for December fifth, and we will send you that registration link and information. Also, really invite, you know, any colleagues, any other folks who you think should be in this conversation who are not. Um, we really want to make a, a partner-centric space here. Um, so there is a reason why we're very carefully trying to have conversations with folks who are providing services, who are in communication with and representing and advocating for different folks who you saw on the list of priority populations. And, and really making sure that you all, whether they are answers you enjoy or not, are in the conversation and that we're maintaining as much transparency as we can, knowing that this is a constant negotiation between a lot of different moving parts. And I see, oh, Suzanne, I already put all this in the chat for me, but um, we do really want to make sure that you are looped in to um, not just this conversation, but all the other ones that we're having. There is a monthly webinar, which is a little more informational and is definitely not two hours long. Um, so if that's more your speed, or you want to also sort of keep us honest in those different areas where we're attempting to engage you, um, please feel free to join that. Uh, we do have an external newsletter that I think might be going out this week, this week or next week, the next one. Um, and also, we want to build something that's gonna serve Oregonians and serve Oregonians moving towards a space of equity and not just repeating some of the things that we know we can do better. So it's gonna be a constant negotiation. It's a five-year process just to get it up and running and prove that this is a good idea. Um, and thanks for being here. And I've gone over, um, but I do really appreciate you. Have a great Thanksgiving, because I probably won't get to talk to you until the other side of this. And I, please, uh, please continue to, to let us know how we can do better. All right. Have a great evening, everyone. Have a great rest of your week. And uh, we had a lot of great participation. And thank you Suzanne and Lisa for presenting and letting us put you on the spot and talking about some things that maybe you weren't planning on talking about today. I really appreciate that as well.
Glad for all these voices. Thank you.
All right, I think we can stop recording.